I'll call to order this regular session, meeting of the Bloomington. We're reconvening regular session held on May 1st, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Granger.
Present.
Rallo.
Here.
Volin.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Sterbaum.
Here.
Sandberg.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, our agenda for this meeting concerns legislation for second reading and resolutions, ordinance 1909, two amendments titled 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled "Vehicles and Traffic," regarding amending chapter 15.04, definitions 15.56, bicycles, skateboards, and other foot-propelled vehicles, 15.60, scooters, pardon me, miscellaneous traffic rules, 15.64, traffic violation schedule, and adding a new chapter, 15.58, motorized scooters and shared-use motorized scooters, to provide for regulation governing motorized scooter, shared-use motorized scooters and shared-use motorized scooter operations. And we had, as I said, we're continuing the meeting from May 1st. We had regular session action, which was to postpone till May 1st, 800, amendment 11, adopt 800, amendment 10, adopt 800, and amendment 9, adopt 701. Note, amendment 1, 03, I guess March 8th, discussed but no vote taken. And then we had a committee recommendation on April 10th of due pass, 306. So we'll take this item up again, owing to multiple unresolved questions that we have. I anticipate there'll be a motion to postpone our considerations until July 31st. We will have that motion toward the end of this meeting. And I, but I would invite everyone to stay because there'll be likely an opportunity for public comment. So with that, is there a motion to structure debate?
You're going to legislation for second reading? Are we there?
Yes, we're there. We've been there.
Mr. President, I will...
Don't we need to reintroduce 1909, Mr. Sherman?
No, we don't.
Do we need to reintroduce 1909? Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that the council structure deliberations on ordinance 1909 tonight in the following manner, and I'm not going from the document that's in front of me. First, that council may ask questions of the administration not to exceed 20 minutes. Second, that members of the public may speak to the ordinance for not more than 20 minutes. And third, that council comments not exceed 20 minutes.
Second.
Can I have a show of hands how many of the public would like to make comments this evening? Comments on scooter ordinance?
One, two, three, four, five.
Five.
Six.
Six.
Seven.
Okay, we have eight. So it'll be about two and a half minutes per person, probably three.
Okay, three minutes per person we'll have then for comments. All right, so do we need a roll call vote on the, the motion's been sec, made and seconded? Voice vote?
It takes a two-thirds vote, so a roll call vote.
Will confirm whether you have six or not.
Will the deputy clerk please call the roll? Yes.
I have a question.
Please, councilmember Piedmont Smith.
The lowest level, he says before. (laughing).
Talking to John Oliver.
Yeah. Celebrity in the room. So my question was, the motion said 20 minutes for public comment, but then you said three minutes each, and I thought I saw eight hands. So is it okay to do 24 minutes of public comment?
While, I wouldn't have a problem with that, per se, the goal is to dispose of this in one hour from its beginning, number one. Number two, most people, over the course of public comment, not everyone uses the whole three minutes, so it's an educated guess that that will be achievable in 20 minutes. But I would not object to going 24 minutes if necessary. This is really up to the chair and the, to oversee this.
Okay, so, as I understand the motion, there is some flexibility?
Yes, and I think that it's owed because I think people came this evening to speak on a, probably a longer debate, and which we will not have, but I would like to hear their comments because it's part of resolving this topic and getting input from the public. So, councilmember Sandberg, did you have a question?
Just to support that each of the eight speakers get their full three minutes.
If they need it.
Okay, so any other questions? Will the deputy clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Councilmember Ruff.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Granger.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Volin.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Sterbaum.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Motion is adopted. All right, so we will first go to council questions of...
Is there no presentation?
Is there a presentation, Mr. Rooker, before we begin? Very sorry.
Thank you, councilmembers. Michael Rooker, City Attorney for the City of Bloomington. It was our understanding that this would just be Q and A, so we do not have a presentation for you.
Very good. So we'll go to questions, questions from council to the administration or the companies. Who would like to begin? Are there any questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I'd like to inquire about enforcement of the interim agreements with Bird &amp; Lime. Because I have, you know, we've discussed in the past several weeks the problem of scooters blocking sidewalks and such, and of course, that's not allowed in the interim agreement. So I was wondering if the administration could speak to enforcement of these interim agreements.
Yes, thank you for that question. We will absolutely do enforcement where that's appropriate, and there's no question we're going to do that. I think what we had been anticipating over the last few weeks was the resolution of scooters through permanent legislation, or more permanent legislation, by this body in the form of ordinance 1909 as amended. And so we had been holding off a little bit on that, but if we're going to be delaying probably till July 31st, obviously, as we see more scooters with warm weather where they are located improperly, we'll be enforcing parking restrictions, use restrictions, in accordance with the interim operating agreement, which are slightly different than, of course, what we see in ordinance 1909.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
So I believe the interim agreements involved a $15,000 fee from both companies, is that correct?
$10,000.
$10,000 from each. So how has that money been used?
So, Alex Crowley, Director of Economic Sustainable Development. So we developed that fee as a way to offset costs. I think it's probably safe to say that a lot of time has been spent to, to sort of monitor and manage the current process of scooter deployment. We have not specifically used it for mitigation on the streets. So as Mike was saying, that I think our plan moving forward would be to look at, and we've solicited already some contracted services, cost estimates, for doing a much more robust mitigation strategy out in the streets. So I think moving forward, a fee would probably be better aligned with that kind of effort, but to now, to date, we haven't specifically used it for that purpose.
Has there been any record-keeping of staff time related to the scooters?
Not specifically.
Councilmember Volin.
Yes, thank you. I'm not sure who this question is for. I imagine it's for the administration collectively. I think you may recall that I asked about the notion of, let's call it, parallel parking for scooters, that part of the problem is that when they have been left out, they've been left out in, you know, clusters, and they've been, you know, they can block a sidewalk that's of a normal width. And I've been inquiring, both last time we talked and in the interim, about the prospect of one of two locations where a scooter could be parked, and trying to ask how reasonable this question is. Number one is, can the scooter be parked on the inside of the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the private property owner, so that, but parallel to the sidewalk, so that if it falls over, it falls into the grass instead of the sidewalk? Secondly, what is the feasibility of the scooter being parked in, let's just call it, the gutter, the space that is right next to the curb, but not on the sidewalk, in the street, especially in a gutter where there is no car parking? What do you think of these ideas? Are they, either of them feasible?
So, I guess I will do my best to answer the second part first, and then I have a, just want to make sure I understand the first half as well before I address that. You know, we, we did see some notion of putting scooters in the roadway in certain areas. We've heard that...
I mean, we're just talking about parking, not driving, parking them in the roadway.
Certainly, I think at this point, we're down to parking issues only.
Right.
So I haven't been very clear about that.
My favorite subject.
But I think that's, and we knew from the beginning, I think, when we talked about this on the committee, that this was easily the stickiest part of this entire business. So we have received some information that there are some thoughts about potentially requiring on-street parking, where there are curbs and where there are not curbs, and we are processing that information right now. We don't have, we're discussing it internally. Unfortunately, we got some input back from the council a little bit too late for us to fully develop our thoughts on that matter, and for the Public Works Director is out right now. I know he'll have some thoughts about trash pickup and snowplows.
Sure.
And all of those sorts of items related to on-street parking. Planning and transportation has been knee-deep in the transportation plan and the UDO, so it's been a little bit hard to get input from them as well.
We're all finding our way here, and so I sympathize with the challenge here.
We will certainly have more information on that for you on July 31st, assuming we reconvene on this issue then.
Oh, I didn't realize that that was the thought, that we would postpone that late, but that's, that's fine. But let me just...
I may have misheard, sorry.
Yeah, sure, no, no, no problem. Let me ask you another hypothetical. Say that a scooter is parked in the gutter and falls over into the street. What do you think would happen?
We have, there are obvious concerns about the hazard that that might pose to vehicles. But again, I don't want to go too far down that path at this moment until we've had adequate time on our side to discuss those issues with engineering, with planning and transportation, with Public Works.
I appreciate that, but I guess I'm just asking anyone in particular to speculate, do you see how the difference, there might be a difference in response if a scooter was laying down in the street than in a sidewalk? How much more rapid the response might be because it's blocking car traffic? I mean, if it falls over in the street, it becomes the jurisdiction of the police in a way that they simply don't police on the sidewalk. What say you?
So what I would say to that is, it is absolutely our firm intent to do thorough enforcement of non-moving violations. We cannot, you know, I don't want to, we cannot tolerate scooters being parked in our community in a way that is illegal, whether that's in the roadway, whether that's on the sidewalk, we cannot tolerate ADA violations, and we're not going to tolerate it. We're going to find companies. If we find scooters like this, we will impound scooters, which ordinance 1909 authorizes for the first time. We'll do that, and impoundment fees for them to recover their scooters go up. If they can't control their product and their business, we're going to ask the Board of Public Works to cap the number of scooters for the bad actors, and if they still can't control it, we'll ask the Board of Public Works to initiate revocation proceedings for folks who cannot control their product. If you want to operate your business in our right-of-way, we are going to require that you keep our right-of-way clear, and we are going to be extremely thorough about enforcing that. We have to be. We have no other choice. The sidewalk is the public sidewalk, we're going to make sure it's kept clear for the public, and we're not going to tolerate bad actors. So I want to be very clear about that, whether it's the sidewalk or the road.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sterbaum.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the operators about how they're addressing parking in Indianapolis, where I think both companies are, and you're restricted from riding on the sidewalks. How is parking being addressed, if I could ask?
Alex Freeman, General Manager for Lime in Indiana. So Indianapolis has a couple of, a couple of differences in how they allow parking, one of them being the, that gives for more space in especially the areas with narrower sidewalks. The, the green space between the sidewalk and the road is part of the public property, and they allow for parking on that space even if it is grass-covered, which gives a lot more parking opportunities for folks in some of those areas that are, have a lot narrower sidewalks. And then from us as an operator standpoint, and this is something that we, you know, we've been continuing to talk about and continuing to refine here in Bloomington as well, is a lot of that is done through, education is one piece, which is through the app. That's very imperfect, but it's, it's a good start to get folks educated on that. And then the other, the other big piece is our own folks patrolling thoroughly and constantly. We do that on campus, and we also are, you know, focus those efforts through the, I guess, the more congested areas of the city. You know, we think, as we go forward, a good option for us to come to a resolution on some of these items would be for each of us vendors to put a plan in writing for the city of how we plan on addressing these issues, so that we have a plan that we can present and then also be held accountable to, and that we are committing to. So that's, and one of those things, major things, that we're very committed to is a constant and regular patrol of the city. The nice thing compared to Indianapolis here is, it is a smaller geographic footprint, and we're able to cover a lot of ground and either correct issues, and then we, we kind of can come back in on the back end to nudge the folks who parked incorrectly, you know, to correct their behavior.
So, did I understand that you said Indianapolis's sidewalks are wider, so it isn't as big a problem parking in the urban area in Indianapolis?
In downtown, they're, they're pretty wide, but as you get out a little bit, they get pretty narrow, and they, per the ordinance, they actually allow folks to park between the sidewalk and the road, which is usually what folks would think of as that, that grass plot.
The tree plot.
Yeah.
And how did they not fall over in that tree plot?
They can.
Soft dirt.
It, it does happen. We've, our initial generation of scooter had a very narrow, narrow kickstand, and I can't speak for other vendors on that front necessarily, but ours have been consistently getting wider on each generation because we've seen that be an issue, and, you know, that can happen sometimes.
So it looks like you may get a chance to do, make a proposal of that kind.
Councilmember Sterbaum. We'll, we'll wait till comment till the end, and we're running out of time for questions.
I'm sorry.
So let's go to councilmember Granger, and then we'll go to Sims.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Rooker again. You said you are utilizing, or we are looking to utilize, an outside company to monitor the scooters. What does this entail? And then, how much does it cost? Hypothetically, or whatever your term is.
Sure, so the, I will be very direct with you. The quote we have is something on the order of $140,000 annually, to have a company come in and do scooter patrols, and make sure that there are no non-moving violations, and to impound scooters when they're improperly located, to document improperly-located scooters for the purpose of issuing fines to companies. And that entails dedicated staff, who are, their full-time job is to do this, whether they're on-call at certain times, or at other times are actively patrolling the city.
So, so what we have here, let's just say we go with, I think you said it was called sweep or something like that.
That's correct.
So we have city staff here, and we've created this policy to allow scooters, however we do that, but then we hire a company who's going to monitor the scooters, but, and you're thinking that it will free up staff time? City staff time?
You know, we don't, we don't know what we don't know, and so we don't know if we would need to engage three FTEs necessarily, or something like that. So, you know, the, the art of employing a contractor at this point with so little information is that there's no permanent sort of investment. If we determine that in fact, we could go with a lot less, we could probably dial back that contract quite easily. If it turns out that the initial investment isn't enough, then we could, we could probably dial it up very quickly, and there's no sort of permanent addition to staff, the way we would, we would be talking about if we had a different model, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. This is for you, Mr. Rooker, I believe. I think it's for you. I guess, before I get to you, is there a Bird rep here? Okay. No, 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 I don't need to talk to you, just when we ask questions for both companies, I would like to hear from you as well, or from your company, and thank you, Lime. Mr. Rooker, now, and you said we are prepared to enforce, and I think it's the will of BPD and us, that we don't particularly think that's a function for BPD. And you answered, you don't know what we don't know, but I did hear about FTEs and all that, so is that the plan, a potential plan for enforcement?
That's one option. You know, we, we want to see what comes out of ordinance 1909, and then we are going to try whatever works. Again, as I, as I said before, excuse me, we are going to do rigorous enforcement, we have to make sure our sidewalks are clear. If that means hiring sweep, and that works, then we'll go with that model. If that doesn't work, and we need to employ someone full-time, or two, or three people full-time, that's the model we'll use. And again, just to be clear, because I don't think I've said this tonight, we would fully intend to recoup any expenses associated with that level of enforcement back from the scooter companies that are using the right-of-way in the form of licensing fees.
Okay? And last question, I know we're not Indianapolis, but the concept of parking on the grass area between the street and the sidewalk, and my concern is residential areas. It is my responsibility to mow that grass and to do all that. Residents are going to have an issue with this, or the homeowners. If I have to maintain that, and now I have to put it with scooters parking in the area that I'm charged with maintaining, how are we looking at that just yet? And it might be too early, but I, I mean, it's kind of the first thing I've heard, and I know that's Indian, it's not so much us. But what say you about that?
So right now, ordinance 1909 prohibits scooter parking on unimproved surfaces, so it does prohibit scooter parking on, in the tree plot. I think it's an interesting idea that Alex mentioned a second ago. You can see, I think you've quite rightly pointed out that a scooter in the tree plot can be a problem. Obviously, a scooter that's not properly parked on a sidewalk is also a problem, so that's, I think, one of those difficult normative questions to weigh in this, in this process.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rooker, sorry, I had a question, or two. First of all, regarding the interim operating agreement, which will extend until we fashion an ordinance in July, we have a 24-hour service line. Has that been utilized? And I'm particularly interested that if a complaint is made, that a scooter is down, has it been attended to within the two-hour specified by the, has it been checked by city staff or something, that this has been remedied?
So, so I think yes is the short answer to that. We, we've been doing a good job, a very good job communicating with Lime, with David here, anytime we get a report like that, through the mayor's office, through you report, on the phone, to make absolutely certain that, that they're responding timely to relocate or pick up that scooter.
Okay, and my second question is, since so much, essentially, so much trouble evolves from a scooter falling over, aren't there simple devices that would tell you, that would tell the company that the scooter is lying on its side as opposed to being upright? Then couldn't that be placed on scooters?
Yeah, I think that we've heard from the scooter companies in prior meetings, and it may be worthwhile to hear from them now.
Okay.
That that's a bit of technology that they are looking to incorporate into their future devices. I don't know if Alex or Brian wants to comment on that, but...
We're running out of time, is that correct? I had not, would, would, is this something you're looking into? Because it seems to me fundamental.
Short answer, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Sandberg has a question.
With respect to this 24-hour service line, as a public service, I would like to have that phone number. Do we know that? And we can tell everybody, because what I'm hearing is, oh, we're going to enforce it whenever we get an agreement. We have an inner agreement now, and what I'm interested in, how are we going to enforce it now? Like impoundment procedures, fine procedures, when the public sees these things down, blocking a small sidewalk, somebody needs to be called, and that needs to be dealt with ASAP, before we get to any kind of formal agreement. I'm concerned about the here and now. So can anybody give us that 24-hour service line right now?
I don't have it in front of me, but I can, I can let you know about that. Those, those calls don't get filtered through me personally, so I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, because I think, I think what I'm hearing from the constituencies is, we've got problems now, and we've got to have remedies for now. So some sort of reporting mechanism to get these things taken care of are what I'm interested in getting tonight, so, thank you.
Okay, we have 30 seconds remaining, and the last question, we'll go to councilmember Volin.
Councilmember Sandberg's question, I thought that each separate company had to have its own line, or there wasn't a single line. Is there going to be a single reporting line? Or do we have to learn the line of each company?
So the, the line for each company is supposed to be displayed prominently on the scooter, so that's the way the requirement works.
So in other words, there's going to be a separate number for each company?
We have not determined whether or not there will also be an independent number that you could contact that would then be routed as well, so I don't have that information right now.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll turn to public comment now. What, yes, what is it? Is it a point of order?
We are unnaturally constrained when we have lots of questions by this 20-minute period. Will we have an opportunity to ask after the other 20, the public?
No, we won't, because we agree to the conditions of how we structured deliberations this evening, so...
Uh-huh, well, that's inefficient, but...
Well, we were in unanimity in that vote, so we'll turn now to the public. Please state your name and sign in. I think there's a pad there for the clerk.
Also, please note that the time period will begin with a bell and end with a beep, just so that people know.
My name is Ray Paul. First thing, I just wanted to say thank you for giving us the time to talk about this. I've had a lot of questions asked of me, what I thought about not only safety, but also accessibility, and I think there are two issues you can't separate. I've had 20 years of experience in a wheelchair. Frankly, situation as far as safety, both on the streets and sidewalks in Bloomington, has gotten worse. In the last five years, at least from my experience, drivers are more aggressive, they're more in a hurry. I'm much more at risk now than I was five years ago. And I've been hurt, seriously hurt, by, twice, once by a bike, once by a truck. And the bike was on the sidewalk when he hit me. So enforcement concerns me, because I see bicycles are not conforming to what I understand the rules to be, and they can be just as much of a hazard. I would hope you don't put scooters on the sidewalk. To add additional traffic for someone to have to deal with, I think just adds the problem. And as far as for people with disabilities, that plays directly into access. If you don't feel safe, you're not going to participate in things around town. I don't participate in the festivals we have, or the events during the summertime, because not only do you have added traffic, foot traffic, but then you add that with bikes, and then when I hear about scooters being on the sidewalk, it just makes for a dangerous situation. Safety impacts accessibility, and it's going to be a factor. And unless you can show somehow that enforcement is really credible, I don't have a lot of faith in the responsibility I've seen with people with scooters so far, that they're necessarily going to be driving responsibly. And for example, I don't know what I was supposed to do yesterday. I was, I live on Park Ridge, and I went to College Mall just using my wheelchair, and when I tried to cross Third Street, you run into the crosswalks, where you have to hit the button to activate the crosswalks. There's a scooter blocking the pole for me to hit the button to activate the crosswalk, so I'm just sitting there, and I'm not sure what I was supposed to do. I have to wait for someone to come up and press a button for me, or someone across the street to do it for me. What am I supposed to do then? And that's an accessibility problem that I think most people aren't aware of, is more than just clearance, is can you get across the street? Can you hit the button? You know, and, and safety isn't the same every single day. The worse the conditions are outside, the worse the safety factor is. Bad weather is a danger. People are reckless when they drive, they try to get in and out of the rain faster, and they just, they're just not as courteous as they once were. If there's snow on the ground, you're, you're higher risk. So it's not the same every single day, but it's a huge problem. And I hope, I hope you consider the fact that if you put more traffic on the sidewalks, we've already got too much right now, I think. I hope that helps.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Caleb Crane, District Two. Thanks again for another opportunity to come back to the table and talk about this very important issue. I want to commend the council for the work that they've done so far. Particularly, May 1st, I re-watched that council meeting, and I'm not going to lie, I had tears in my eyes, because this council was standing up for people who can't even stand up for themselves sometimes. So that meant a lot to me, personally. Secondly, I'd like to address some of the comments that were made by either the council or the administration in that meeting. It was insinuated by the mayor's administration on May 1st, that they should be allowed to make accessibility available in stages. The ADA has been in place for 30 years, at least. So accessibility needs to be available now. These companies coming into creation should have thought about these issues before entering into their business model, because accessibility has been available through the ADA for decades. Lastly, I wanted to echo on a point that the previous speaker had said. These safety concerns are keeping people with disabilities home, keeping them socially isolated. So not only do they have to risk their physical safety to go out and do things, but now, because they cannot use the sidewalk, we are causing them mental damage. And we all know how important mental health is these days. I urge you to look at the email that I sent to the council this afternoon, read those statements from other members of the disability community, people who advocate for us, who support us, who make it possible for us to travel in these areas when they're unsafe. They have covered a lot of the points that I would have covered in my spoken argument this evening, had I had given more time. And to wrap up, I will just say, I will be here after the special session concludes to talk more directly, to address any of your concerns, to make myself available, because I have ideas, just like Councilmember Volin, to mitigate this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Crane.
The single beep means 30 seconds. You have another 30 seconds after that beep, when it starts to beep continuously, that's timed up. Thank you.
We're still on public comments, so please step up if you have a comment, and...
We're trying, we're pressed for time, so if you can be prepared to speak, we would appreciate it.
Alex Freeman, General Manager for Lime, Indiana. Once again, thank the council as well for their time, and these, these concerns are very, they are, are important, and they, they are important to us. And just a couple of notes on some of the things that we've discussed here today. One concern we have on the enforcement front with a, an outside vendor, I'll, I'll just comment on that real quick. With an outside vendor coming in on the enforcement piece, their business model is, you know, we've heard, I've heard some anecdotal issues with specifically that sweep company mentioned, but just a, a company like that, whose incentives are for people to park incorrectly. Because in those cases, their business model is relying on people misbehaving, and their incentives are therefore not aligned with the success of a mobility program. Because they, they, their business depends on people doing the wrong thing. So we, you know, I'd encourage the administration, and everyone here as we're talking through this, continued, to think of a solution on enforcement that is in alignment with the program being successful. And part of that is around those enforcement pieces. So that's just something I think would be useful to think about. Also, I really do think that as a vendor, we should be, as we address these issues going forward, is to continue to be a part of the conversation and come up with a, I think I lost my mic, come up with a...
Hold on. The green button at the top?
Okay, how about now? Anything? Hello. Okay, thank you. To have a, a written plan around accessibility, and it's something as a company we're working on in Chicago right now, and that is, that we can also model here with Bloomington, with input from, again, residents, as well as the administration and the council, for us to address a lot of these concerns. And that's really all I wanted to say, and thank you for your time on the issue.
Thank you.
What happened to the pen?
Could we please move the sign and sheet to the table next to it, so that people can come up to the podium and speak right away?
Thank you for listening to us, to us tonight. You want it over here?
Yeah, right there. Okay, thank you.
I'm Valerie Marion. I really appreciate your having us. And I want to say, I'm hearing Lime and Bird say, they're going to think about these things, address these things. Shame on you. Your business plan should have included all these things to begin with. I don't look like a person with disabilities, but I have a partially fused ankle. I have no lateral movement. When it happens, somebody forces me, I fall, and with excruciating pain. I've had to move because of scooters, any number of times. I got interviewed by two project school students who were doing a project on scooters, right in front of Trojan Horse yesterday. A scooter came and went up Kirkwood, and I yelled at him, "Dismount! There's the sign right there." He didn't dismount. I have said that to people many times. This is a dismount area. Put your bike in the street, or walk it. They are not responsible. I do not know how you train these college-age students and older to be responsible. I saw a father last week with two children on his scooter, one in front, one in back. I said a quick prayer. Not only are this, the kids not supposed to be on the scooter, that is a huge accident waiting to happen, especially with the condition of our sidewalks in town that are so unlevel. I said to the police officer over here, "Can you deputize some of us for citizen arrests? Because we're the ones who see it happening. We would love to be able to do something right then." I was ready to put the scooter numbers down in my phone when you asked for it, and I couldn't, because I've taken pictures many times and sent them to City Hall about, "What are you doing about this?" It is, it is a pox on our community, as far as aesthetics, to see them turned over all the time. And I usher at the busker, "Chumley, I'm often on the door." I can't tell you how many times people have come by on their scooters and gone around our patrons, where they just feel like they're in a corral, and they're just looking, you know, like, what just happened? They don't slow down, they certainly don't stop. So there are a lot of issues that need to be addressed over time. But I don't know how you teach responsibility. I really don't. And I fear for a lot of these young people, who aren't wearing helmets. I was at my bone doctor this morning, I won't name him. I said, "How's your business with scooters?" He said, "Very good." So thank you. I won't be here July 31st, I'll be out of town, but I hope you can have a lot of accommodations that meet the needs of all people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Jean Kapler, and I want to introduce one other consideration when you're thinking about scooter regulations. I, my field of study is working with folks with brain injuries. And I know that the hospital has said, there have been several folks come into the hospital with brain injuries related to scooters, although they don't write down, you know, what was the mode of transportation that caused the accident, or that was involved in the accident. So it's hard to get real numbers to know the increase in brain injuries since scooters have come to town. However, we've seen a couple of articles in the paper about some quite serious brain injuries that have occurred. And the lifetime cost of a brain injury that results in lasting effects can run in the millions of dollars, and it becomes a public health issue with the cost involved, in terms of increased utilization of social services, increased risk of developing a substance use disorder after a brain injury, increased risk of death from opioid overdoses after a brain injury. And I can supply some documents that, that, you know, studies that will back those numbers up. Increased risk of incarceration after a brain injury. So luckily, out of all the brain injuries that occur in the U.S., about 70% of them tend to be minor sort of concussions without lasting effects. 15% of the brain injuries that occur are more moderate to severe brain injuries, that are more likely to have lifelong effects, and it's now considered a chronic health condition by the CDC. But 15% of the brain injuries out there are those minor brain injuries, those concussions, that continue to have lifelong effects for folks, that interfere with your ability to be employed and maintain stable employment, to finish your college degree. And every, you know, people think, oh, it's just a concussion, but it can have serious effects. So I want us to be thinking about, I don't even know if, in Indiana, we're allowed to have local helmet laws, but I know the scooter companies offer to mail a helmet to riders, but I've not seen any wearing helmets. So I want us to consider what we want to do about at least mitigating some of the risk of lifelong disability. And finally, when we talk about cost, possibly paying a company to police the scooters in town and enforcement, I think if we're going to invest in a company being here and helping them do business by spending our public dollars on that, we need to know what the benefits are of this scooter. Is this reduction in carbon emissions? And is that actually real? We need to be looking into this, and so since you're going to consider this in July, maybe we can do more research. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dave Durka. I was listening last time you had a session about, what, I can't hear?
State your name.
Oh, Dave Durka.
Thank you.
And you're talking about the corral, which kind of reminds me of the old West. And the corrals were used back then to house your horses for overnight stays usually, where somebody would wet down the horse, take off the saddle, clean it, comb it. And the other thing that was happening at that time period was hitch and post. So I looked at it from that perspective, that maybe the answer to scooters, this only deals with storage, the scooter's not driving them in the public. And I thought, well, they could share the space, this one's off-center, but they could share the space with the bike. So you could have a shared space kind of thing, if there are, if it's not full with bikes. Next. And this is one, this is a little bit early, but this is a way to store a scooter, next one? Yeah, on the outside of the meter, where it has minimal intrusion into the sidewalk, if any. And it won't tip over towards the meter, because the meter stops it, and the little brake, the little pedal, kickstand stops it from going into the street. You could also develop, as they get heavier, kickstands, that would even be better. But you could also have some kind of tether to the parking meter to secure it. And you might ask the street department, because there's a lot of people that work every day with this stuff, how to kind of just temporarily hook it up. Next. And there it is. It doesn't interfere with putting money in the meter, and it has a less profile than a bike hooked up to the meter. Next. There's another view of it, where you could easily just step over the scooter and put in money in the meter, and if you fix it a little bit more, it won't fall into the street. Next. And there's an example of the streetscape. The one near the meter offers you a clear path down the sidewalk. The one on the right does project into the sidewalk. Next. There's a meter hitch and post waiting to happen. Next. And that little patch on the, on the right, seems like it's not part of the sidewalk, so that might be another place to put the meters temporarily, instead of on the brick, which is more the sidewalk. And you have that tree there, so that prevents kind of people from going onto that patch of cement. Next. That's just another shot of that. Next. And another shot? Okay, well, there should be a Secretary of the Future. Where's that from? Okay, that's it. All right, thank you very much. That's just some ideas, hopefully they might help solve some of the storage problems, not driving or courtesy or anything like that, just where do we put them when you're not using them? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Further public comment?
Good evening. Brian Roach, Regional Operations Manager for Bird over Indiana. Just wanted to just add some light into, you know, our efforts here in Bloomington and all of Indiana. We have been very vigorous in trying to find effective methods of where to store scooters, and also influence rider behavior, methods such as, you know, preferred parking, putting a lot of that tech in the app to try to drive, you know, our riders to operate our vehicles as safely and effectively as possible. You know, one thing, part of the reason why I'm here is to provide an increased local presence, to try to figure out hands-on, in-person what's going on, and so that we can effectively fix it. So just to provide that comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Please step forward. Okay. Seeing none, we're back to council for 20 minutes of comment. Who would like to begin? Who would like to begin? Counsel? Any comment? Councilmember Sturbaum?
Yes, at the end of our last meeting, I suggested that, I think I was talking to both a Bird and a Lime representative, that they come back with their own suggestions, you know, that we need to work, meet halfway, and you're, you're having the same issues in all the cities you're in. So you're actually more expert than we are. So you hear this whole discussion about where to park, what to do, and I would like to hear proposals from the scooter companies, that you, you realize our problem here, and I don't think we're any different than most of the other cities. I think you're, you could use your own expertise, and not come at the last minute with something, but we've got some time between the meetings. Let's come up with some suggestions that you can outreach to the administration on, they can talk to council president with that, and we can get that feedback, so we're not just surprised at the last minute. Because rushing can make some decisions that may have unintended consequences, and I think it would be very helpful to hear responsible and sincere solutions from the scooter companies themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comment? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I liked what Ms. Marion said, that the scooter companies should have thought about accessibility from the beginning. It should have been part of their business plan. It should have been part of their business plan to realize that they need to work with the municipalities where they show up, rather than just dumping dozens of scooters in our I recognize that some people from Bird and from Lime are now trying to work with the city, but that doesn't make up for the fact that for the last seven or eight months, we've had these scooters just thrust upon us without any conversations. I know that, that the administration has talked to, at least with Lime, but, you know, we got off on the wrong foot. we got off on the wrong foot, and it's because of Bird and Lime. So it's a little bit difficult for us to now try to be accommodating when you guys didn't even pick up the phone and call anybody in Bloomington before showing up. Other thoughts I have on scooters, I thought, I've been reading what other communities have done, and I thought I read somewhere that, and I don't remember which city it was, but that there was kind of a snap and send function where if you see a misparked scooter, you could easily take a picture with your phone and send it to the company to report it. Now, I only have the Lime app on my phone, I don't have the Bird app, but just trying to even find where I could report problems is several steps in this app. So, I mean, if, if there was some easy way to just say, boom, that scooter is misparked, and then go in the app and send that photo, that would be very helpful. It's rather annoying to me that we don't have these phone numbers. I know that a Lime representative said, well, they're on the scooters. Well, tell me what they are, because usually when I hear from constituents, I'm not standing right next to the scooter. And they want to know. So publicize your phone numbers to everybody, not just people who have your app. The bottom line for me is accessibility, and we need to make sure that our sidewalks are accessible, as accessible as possible, for people with disabilities. And I know we, we don't do a great job to begin with. I mean, there are more problems that our sidewalks have than scooters, but here's something that we can control, we should be able to control, and we should put responsibility on the people who brought the scooters. So that's what I'm going to be looking for. I want to just echo what councilmember Sterbaum said. Please don't wait until July to come to us with your ideas. Let's keep talking, and hopefully there's some way to work this out. I think, you know, it's a nice mobility option, but if we can't keep the sidewalks accessible, then it's just not going to work. Thank you.
Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. I just really have one comment. I don't, I don't like scooters on the sidewalk. I voted against it. I don't like bikes on the sidewalk. I voted against that. And I just think that there's more that we can do to make this accessible to all. And I'm hoping to hear something from the companies with the experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. What I want to say is, when the scooters were first dropped off, it's like we went to sleep and we woke up and they were here. They were everywhere. And initially, we, or I, I should say I, I thought it was another option for part of our multimodal transportation plan, that would help maybe reduce the use of cars and maybe some carbon emissions. But then as time goes on, it became clear to me, as, and we've worked on this for a while, number one, the, the companies have put zero contributions to our city infrastructure, which you're using. That, that has to be considered. You put zero into the infrastructure that we have already invested in that you're using. Okay, that's, that's the first thing. The next thing is that we're kind of left as city council and administration, to an extent, to clean up some of these resulting issues. You see, and that's not something I'm real happy about, that now we have to be concerned with our citizens with accessibility. We have to make sure that they're not parked illegally. We have to try to figure out ways to park them in gutters propped against meters. I just wish that you would have came in, we sat down, we talked and worked some things out, and then rolled out your business model. And we take a little heat, too. That's okay. That's what we're here for. Okay? I personally, and I could just speak for myself, I was kind of vilified in, in a letter to the editor, because I passed on one of these votes, because I was still concerned about some of the ultimate costs of putting these corrals or whatever in proximate areas. You know, I've heard the words untenable and these sorts of things. I'm trying to compromise here, but this is a two-way thing. Okay? And I'm not going to defend anything. I will just tell you that I worked at Indiana University for 33 years in facilities, and we take ADA and accessibility seriously. I mean, I've had to measure the proper length for toilet paper dispensers, and handles, and these sorts of things. Make sure that they're not blocking doorways and stairways. So for someone who don't know me, don't know what we've done, don't know many of us here, to say we don't really care because some of these companies allow these things to be parked illegally, or some of their clients, I should say, I mean, that's kind of an affront to us. So please, as we say, there's time, work with us to solve this, because we're the ones that's in the position that has to make these decisions, and trust me, we will. But we'd like to work with you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. When I left this meeting on May 1st, which went into the wee small hours, we left here at midnight. I was not happy with the tenor and, and the discussion. I have, in the interim, as I was driving home at midnight, I, I actually saw two of the scooters down right across the sidewalk on North Walnut as I'm driving. A lot of the issues that I'm struggling with are the compliance issues and the enforcement issues now. And I'm, I did not get answers tonight, so I'm still not very happy. In monitoring Facebook, I think some people were referring to some of us up here as grumpy boomers. And I want to assure everybody that my concerns here are very serious, so if you want to call that grumpy, you can go right ahead and do that. But I don't understand how we are ignoring the ADA here. I don't understand how the rights of these companies to come in and drop their product and leave it up to the public sector to deal with it, to trump what we, what our responsibility is, who've taken oaths to the Constitution to, to respect established law. So when the conversation went off the rails last week, and there were, people walked out, and there were threats of, oh, if you don't pass this, and you don't give accommodation, you know that, General Assembly's going to come back around, and they're going to hurt you even worse than you already are, how does that trump the ADA? I think we have an obligation to keep our sidewalks clear. I agree with councilmember Granger. I didn't vote against scooters on the sidewalk last time we visited this, May 1, but I'm inclined to do it now, based on what I heard. I'm still disturbed about things I'm hearing tonight, which is, one, the sweep company, that everybody's kind of looking to as the savior. Sweep's going to come in and sweep, and there're going to be the new sheriff in town, we're going to keep them off the sidewalks, they won't be falling down. And then I hear that Sweep's motive is to, the worse people behave, and the more fall down, the more money they make. That doesn't work for me either. I want compliance. I want enforcement. When we, these things are down, I want a number to be able to call and be able to report it, and somebody's 24/7 out there getting it upright, getting it where it needs to be, at the very least, if we don't ban them altogether, or at least prohibit them from the sidewalks. So I am not any more comfortable right now than I was two weeks ago with this whole thing. I'm feeling threatened. I'm feeling like, again, people are saying, if you don't let us do this, 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 we're going to come around and do something worse to you. And I'm thinking our responsibility up here is to protect our residents, especially the most vulnerable in our community, who we hear from loud and clear, time after time, who we've been hearing from ever since these vehicles were dropped on our community. And I would like to see some leadership step up, not, not in July when we come back. I'd like to see some leadership step up and tell us how we're going to enforce the dismount zones along Kirkwood. It's summertime and the living is easy, and we were just having some dinner at Nixon's, and we were watching all the stuff go by on Kirkwood going, whoa, you know, who didn't get the memo? This is not allowed. And our police can't do it because it's not a moving violation on our street. So we're in a bind here. So I agree, this needs more time to get this straightened out, but my concern is, what are we going to do in the here and now? And I want to see some leadership from this administration to give us some guidance, to get somebody out there instructing, educating, making sure that if we can't get them off the sidewalks in the interim, until we come up with a reasonable, rational plan, where's the sheriff? Where are the people saying to these individuals who are riding on our sidewalks in congested areas where they shouldn't be anyway, you can't do that here, and not have them just ride by and go, eh, grumpy boomer? That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Volan, did you have a comment?
Yeah. I do question both the cities and the scooter companies' abilities to adequately police scooter parking in the pedestrian right-of-way. I don't know enough about Sweep to know, I would think that maybe between now and whenever we do take it up again, assuming we're going to postpone, that maybe they'd be hired for a trial run, I don't know. But I do know that, I've heard a couple of cases of people being dissatisfied with the insufficient promptness with which they're, they're, they've reported scooters down in Ureport, and they get, they heard, they hear back from the city in a day or two, and it's like, if it's not addressed in half an hour, what's the point of filing? There is a number we could be texting in order to address scooter issues, and that number should be 311. It's, in other cities, it's known as One Call to City Hall. It's an all-purpose centralized number for people to call for any issue. There should be a number like that, one number, not one for every company, that you can text a photo to and say scooter down, and people can respond to it. Nice and simple, with South Councilman Piedmont Smith's issue. Signage has also been an utter failure, as Ms. Miriam noted in the dismount zone, which is a dismount zone in name only. Effectively, no one got the memo. Then, and, you know, there's, the signage is wholly inadequate to communicate what should be happening there. Finally, I appreciate the photos of the, the idea about parking by meters. That will work as long as we have single-spaced meters. If we go to multi-spaced meters, it's going to not, not be viable way to park. But I like the ideas in those photos. But more importantly, I don't have enough time to say all this, there are two public interests here. We could ban scooters or effectively do so, but we wouldn't be addressing the elephant in the street, which is the speed of motor cars. That is what drove bicycles to the sidewalks. That's what drives scooter riders to the sidewalks. And bicycles and scooter riders are effectively equivalent. And to that, if anybody wants to say otherwise, I will point you to the unfortunate death of Michael Brooks on Monday night. He was a bicycle commuter. I knew him personally. He served me at the Upland. He left behind four children. He was commuting from the Upland to Rob's Lane, which is quite a haul outside the city. But the key thing to know about Mikey, as they knew him, was that he rode an e-bike, not just a regular bike. And he owned a car, but he commuted to work by bike. I know it's outside of jurisdiction, but the big issue here is the speed of motor cars and the way that we allow cars to be the default everywhere, not just outside the city, but in it. If, if we can't see that by now, I don't know why we're bothering here. We decriminalized bikes on sidewalks last year. We didn't encourage them to ride on sidewalks. There are several people here in motor scooters, e-bikes, motor scooters, mobility scooters, and rental scooters are all issues that we have to address, and we're not going to address them if we just say, ban the rental scooters. We have to address the, the fact that the streets are default for motor cars, and they shouldn't be, and they never should have been. I don't know what to say more than that. I'm looking forward to talking about it again soon. Thank you.
Other comments from council? I think I'll say what's probably already been said, and that is that scooters cannot be permitted to compromise accessibility on our sidewalks. And I'd like council to reconsider in July the prohibition of scooters on sidewalks and crosswalks. I don't think they belong to operate there. And as, besides the potential for accident, I, as Mr. Paul and Mr. Crane describe, it sends a message to those with disabilities that, that there's a hazard of even attempting to be on a sidewalk. And I think that is unfortunate. It's more than unfortunate. It's, it's unjust. I want to echo that enforcement is essential. I think that we absolutely need that, and it doesn't, it doesn't give me great confidence to see, I think we've all witnessed scooters blocking sidewalks. I know on Election Day, Mr. Livingston showed me, sent me three photos of, on his way to the polling site, three instances of scooters blocking sidewalks. It seems simple enough to install a device that would indicate to the companies that the scooter was on its side as opposed to upright. That would solve a lot of it. Wouldn't solve everything, but it would solve a lot. And so I think that would be a question that I would have in July, too. How soon can we have this adaptation? So with that, is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we postpone ordinance 19-9 to the regular session.
On July 31st.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Eight-zero.
The motion for postponement is adopted, eight-zero. Thank you. Do we have a, do we have a second?
Point of order, this meeting will be followed by a regular session, but we'll take a break between meetings.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are we adjourned? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourned. I'd like to call the order, this regular session meeting of the common council for May 15th, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ruff?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Granger?
President.
Rallo?
Here.
Volan?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Sterbaum?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will, here is the agenda summation. We'll have approval for minutes of April 3rd, 2019, regular session. We'll go to reports from council members, the mayor and city offices, council committees, and then we'll have time for the public, 20 minutes for items not on our agenda. We'll go to appointments to boards and commissions, and then we have one item for legislation for second reading and resolutions, that is appropriation ordinance 1903, to specially appropriate funds from the food and beverage tax fund expenditures related to the convention center expansion, and making a standing request for recommendations from the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission as future needs for those expenditures arise. The committee recommendation was due pass 306. We have no legislation for first reading, and then we'll have an additional time for public comment at the end of our meeting before we visit our council schedule and then adjourn. So let's move now to approval of minutes.
Mr. President, I move approval of minutes for our regular session meeting on April 3rd, 2019.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Yes, I sent a few corrections to the clerk. I think they've been incorporated.
Substantive changes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other corrections or additions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of accepting those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those minutes are adopted. We'll now go to reports from council members. I'll begin on my left with councilmember Sandberg.
No report, thank you.
No report.
Councilmember Sims?
No report.
Councilmember Volan?
Yes, I made a statement in the prior regular session about Mr. Brooks. I just wanted to say that he was my cousin's brother-in-law, and I knew him personally, and I regret to hear of his demise. It was a hit-and-run accident on the corner of North Russell Road and East 45. There are not many leads. Anyone who lives in that area, I know it's outside the city, but you may know people who live there, who may have heard a noise or seen something on Monday night around 10:30, are urged to contact the police department. It's a sudden and shocking bit of news to hear. It is tragically relevant to many of the things that we've been discussing recently, not just scooters, but transportation in general. And so it's something I'll be thinking about, I'll be thinking about him when we start talking about the transportation plan in the weeks to come. But my condolences to his family and to the Upland Brewing Company that lost a very good employee. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Volan. Councilmember Ruff, do you have a report?
No.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No report.
Councilmember Granger?
I just want to remind people to take vacations. I don't care if it's in your backyard or it's on the East Coast, but it does wonders for cleansing the soul and cleaning the mind. Thank you.
Thank you for that advice. I have no report. So we will now move to reports from mayor and city offices. Are there any? Getting feedback. Seeing no reports, we'll go to council Seeing no reports, we'll go to council committee reports. Seeing none, we will go to the public. If the public has comments not on this agenda, you're welcome to come up and have five minutes. Please state your name, too.
Hey, I just wanted to ask the council to consider working with the administration to craft some sort of legislation to better communicate construction work throughout the city. I live in the reserve at Chandler's Glen over off of 17th Street and the construction company has effectively made both sidewalks on either side of the streets inaccessible. So going right back to Councilmember Volan's report about, you know, hit-and-runs being a major issue because car traffic is unregulated within the city, ask that we work on better communicating and better planning construction projects so I don't have to walk in the street and neither do the people who are helping support me.
Thank you for that comment. Other comment from the public, please step up.
Hello, I'm Alex Goodlad, 2679 East 7th Street. I just want to talk about the scooter issue. I used to be a, I, I used to, I guess, be more supportive of scooters before I kind of, before I started to see how much of a problem it was to ADA compliance in particular. And, but I, I would like to stress that independent of the, the issues seem to be to do with the company business model and how, like, how terrible the company is at just talking to the city and working it out with the city, which isn't a good model, but on the same token, I would like to sort of second what Steve Volan is talking about with, you know, people getting hit for biking out on the street, you know, with, with a, with a motorbike. And, and say that we really need to work on making our infrastructure better for smaller vehicles. You know, I'm, I frequently ride my bike and I, there's definitely a lot of improvement to be made in that area. And, you know, we seem to be finding millions for, say, like a new parking garage in like, in this convention center that we're going to talk about. I think we can find the money for, you know, just to paint the streets with additional lanes and more infrastructure. Thanks for, thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, you'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Do we have appointments to the boards and commissions?
Mr. Chair, I move appointment of Jennifer Smallwood to the Commission on Children and Youth.
Second.
Okay, that motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of that appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Smallwood. Any other appointments to boards and commissions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to legislation for second reading and resolutions.
Mr. President, I move that appropriations ordinance 1903 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that appropriation ordinance 1903 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 1903, to specially appropriate from the food and beverage tax fund expenditures related to the convention center expansion and making a standing request for recommendations from the food and beverage tax advisory commission as future needs for those expenditures arise. The synopsis reads as follows. This ordinance appropriates funds from the food and beverage tax fund for expenditures related to the convention center expansion project, including expenditures for Phase 1 of the project, which, which involves conceptual and design work, a survey, appraisals and environmental work, legal and financial advice on various issues related to the project, including a bond issue and such other related services as may be identified. It received a committee recommendation of due pass 306.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Mr. President, I move that appropriations ordinance 1903 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Renison?
Good evening, council members. Mick Renison, Deputy Mayor. Last week when we came before you, we brought the ordinance requesting use of funds from the food and beverage tax. And I think with the most recent public comment, I should maybe make a appropriate description of what this fund can and can't be used for. So this is the newly enacted, a year ago, food and beverage tax, 1% on prepared foods and beverages that are served in restaurants and bars and, and actually at grocery stores where prepared foods are created and food trucks and all of the places that do this and collect the tax and, and move it forward to the state. This 1% can be used for tourism-related activities. And the city and the county have worked out a memorandum of understanding that pledges the city's collection size, which is 90% of the overall collected amount, to the convention center project. So this can only be used for tourism activities, can't be used for anything else. And so the city and the county are collaboratively working together to look at an expansion of the existing convention center. Reiterating what I said last week, the second most popular destination for conventions in the state, the smallest convention center in the state. So we're trying to add the, the right amount of space and, and size it to the correct size, not overbuild but not underbuild, so we can attract some of the lost business that's been documented in the last seven years when this last study came out suggesting we should have expanded or should consider expanding our convention center. And that was seven years ago. Oddly enough, I was just at a Parks and Recreation event yesterday, visiting with some former peers of mine, and they said, we sure would like to come back to Bloomington, but we've outgrown your convention center. And we used to have that event here every three years. And that's a common story, just to give you one example of one association that loves coming to our market, but has outgrown the size of our existing space. So our request before you at this stage, and there are many more coming for various other parts of the project as we move forward, is to hire a bond counsel and our financial advisor. And these are required steps to issue a bond or debt service against the food and beverage tax at some point in the future. At this stage, we're trying to understand exactly how much the collected food and beverage tax can supply as a revenue stream for dedication towards this expansion of the convention center. And then what other funding mechanisms might be used and available for some of the ancillary support elements that would go along with the expansion. And you might think of those as the parking structure, the skywalks or art garden or whatever is finally decided about how to connect the elements together, incentives that may have to come along for the hotel developer in the future. So we're really looking at what are all the menu of options. The primary one of, of course, is the food and beverage tax. So this is a required step to take the next steps we need to do, to do our due diligence. The total amount we're asking for is not to exceed $200,000. This is between Barnes and Thornburg, the selected bond counsel, and OW Crone, the selected financial advisor of the city. This is a fixed amount. It would be the same if we were bonding for 10 million or 15 million or 20 million. It doesn't matter. That was a, an appropriate question to ask and we, we sent the email back to the counselor who asked that, wanted to share that with the rest of you, that this amount would not exceed that, regardless of the size of the bond that would be coming forward at, at a later date. It did show you some site plans that are being considered at the moment. They're still in consideration. I mentioned last week that there are multiple steps coming up. Next week, the steering committee meets again in the hope that we narrow down the number of site plans to something less than that. Because we'll be coming back to you in June with the request to contract with the architect, who's already under contract doing Phase 1, the site planning, and ask for funds to go ahead and extend their contract to go into design elements of the, of the center. So we'll be back to you in June for that request. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Jeff Underwood, our controller, is here to answer questions. We did use, this is the only two slides I'll show you, but we do have the others. If it comes up that you want to know what the food and beverage tax amounts collected from year to date, we can show you that as well, if that's a refresher for you.
Thank you. Mr. Renison, questions from council? Start with Chris Sterbaum.
Yeah, so the food and beverage tax has been explained to cover about 35 million or something like that. If we bond, support this, I guess the bonding has to be done for something small or large. So we're not exactly committing to the larger plans by approving this. But are we, are we indirectly giving a green light to the larger version of these plans? So that in June, will the selection have been made on an assumption that council will support a $40 million bond? Is that how this is going to play out?
No, not at all. You, you'll just be allowing us to explore what the funding options are. And we do think you're right, about 30 to 35 million from the food and beverage tax. But we are not making any predetermined selection of a site plan or an amount for the project at this time. That's a discussion for a later meeting, another meeting.
But three of them exceed the budget by a large amount, it seems. Three of the, three of the four options.
So I guess I would say we don't have a budget yet. We have an idea of what we thought the food and beverage tax would produce seven years ago. And in fact, that's true. It is producing that revenue stream. We really don't have a budget. We haven't selected the project that we want to do. And we have a partner in the project, the county. So they have land and they have assets they could bring to the table. And they too have to go through the process of determining what they want to commit toward resources to the project.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Volan?
Yes. The concern that Councilmember Sterbaum expressed is one that perhaps you might elaborate on, namely, will we be seeing more variations in our price range when it actually comes back to us? Or will at least the, I mean, as he said, three of the four that were initially presented were pie in the sky kind of things, that they were well beyond the ability of the tax alone to fund it directly. So, you know, I'm not sure that any of them were particularly modular. I think one of them might have been. But will there be more modular presentations that show a sort of a Phase 1 to be done soon and a Phase 2 to be done in the indefinite future?
Yes, there, there are versions of the phasing options, if you will, part of which you saw the, the half-block use of the northern site. It was going to be designed, if that's the chosen path to go, to be expandable from there. We also asked the consultants after our last meeting, not, not the meeting with you all, but the last steering committee meeting that Councilmember Sterbaum was at, to look at an option between half and full. And the reason for that is if half doesn't prove to serve the number of lost business people that we need to go after, I'll make a bit of an assumption here. Let's say building half generates 25% more business, but building three-quarters generates 90% more business. We don't want to cut our nose off to spite our face. We want to make sure we build this appropriately sized to attract the business that we know we're losing. So if we can only afford half with the food and beverage tax as the sole source, but it doesn't produce the outcome that we expect, the economic development and generation of funds, then we'll have to consider whether that's worth doing at all, or do we phase it in some other way? So those are all things to be discussed yet.
Is there a, a shining example of a market like ours that has a convention space that we'd like to be like? And if so, how much square footage do they have?
That's a good question. We've asked the market analyst to produce some comparisons for the March, I'm sorry, May 23rd steering committee meeting next Friday to look at our existing competition. Councilmember Ruff asked for, who are we competing with in the state? And I sent that list to, to Councilmember Ruff. And I think I mentioned them last week. It, it would be what you would expect, Evansville, French Lick, Muncie, Terre Haute's building one now, and also South Bend and Fort Wayne. So those are kind of our market competition. The market analyst has said, but you're Bloomington. People have a reason to go to Bloomington unlike they do for other places in the state. So you're going to outperform some of them based on the fact that you have the university, the attraction of your community and a whole lot of other variables, being, again, reiterating that statistic I use about the second most desirable destination.
Of course.
Is all in our favor. Now it's right sizing that amount of square footage, which was your question. What's the right mix?
Or what's the range?
I hope to hear that. The range, I think, is, and there's sort of two numbers in this range. There's the actual square footage, gross square footage, which includes all the back of the house things, the unrentable space, and then the usable space. So the usable space is about half that amount.
Right.
So in gross square footage, we have 44,000 current square footage, square feet in the existing convention center, or about 20,000 usable in this case.
Right.
The expansion needs to be somewhere in the six, 40,000 to 80,000 gross square footage range.
So you're, you're saying adding another 40,000 to 80,000 to the existing 44,000?
That is correct.
So you're looking at 84,000 to 124,000 gross square foot, gross square feet? And so 42,000 to, or 40,000 to 60,000 usable square footage?
That is correct.
That's our goal?
That's correct.
And of the four things that were presented to us last week, how many square feet were each of those again?
Three of them were 80,000 and one of them was 40,000. So we're still looking for that in-between model that they're going to develop for us for May 23rd.
Wait, wait, three of those were 80,000 additional and one was 40,000 additional? Or that the total, including the existing convention center?
Additional. Three of them were 80,000 additional and one of them was 40,000.
Okay, so basically what we got was either end of that range. There was one that was the low end of the range and three at the high end.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
We're still on council questions? Going once? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Renison. We'll go to public comments on appropriation ordinance 1903. Please step up.
Alex Goodlad, 2679 East 7th Street. You heard before, but I'll say it again. So involving the, involving this, the Mamro County Convention Center, the expansion, I, I guess there's, I've, I've heard kind of a lot about how it's going to develop that might bother me, which is, I'm, I'm kind of wondering, and this is something that hopefully I hear about later, but I just want to bring it to the council's attention. Because this, this is things I've heard from the community, is that it, it, if it is, if my knowledge is correct, it, it might get expanded on the sort of artisan alley area. And what I would hope is that it doesn't sort of intrude on a lot of, a lot of the traditional art that is in that area. Because that, you know, one of the selling points of the convention center is that it's good for local artists. And if, if it did that, I'm not saying it does, then that wouldn't necessarily be the case. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying I'm necessarily opposed to the convention center, but I do think that, that needs to be looked into and that kind of would decide whether funding should go into it. So I think it's relevant to this, this specific motion. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Further comment from public? Seeing none, we're back to council for final comment and perhaps a recommendation. Begin on my right with Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I wanted to repeat what I said last week, because this week it'll be in minutes, that I am opposed to any funds other than the food and beverage tax being used for expansion of the convention center. So I, that's not going to keep me from voting yes on this particular appropriation ordinance, but I want that to be known just as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Ruff, did you have a comment?
Well, I, I share, Councilmember Piedmont Smith's concern about, you know, sort of speculative, speculative overbuilding of, or speculative building of, of this project and without really having a handle on, on what, what the overall impact is in terms of growth and expansion of the community. Because as, I know this all started, this whole project was taking shape way before the 2018 comprehensive plan. But, you know, the comprehensive- was taking shape way before the twenty-eighteen comprehensive plan, but, you know, the comprehensive plan, we, we put statements in there, in the guiding document, in the vision statement, and in several places in the document, that talked about, we really want to carefully evaluate every investment we make, and make absolutely certain that it, it's not, it's primarily driving growth in quality, qualitatively rather than quantitatively. And along those lines, I'd like to make another comment, and I'm looking at the comp plan right now. And this is related to the competition question with other communities. We modified last, in twenty-eighteen, we modified the vision statement on Bloomington as a regional economic hub, and I'll read it real quickly. It says, "Vision Statement on Objective and Objective Guidance on Regional Economic Hub. The council wishes to clarify the intent of the eighth bullet listed in the council's twenty-thirteen vision statement, reading 'Enhance the Community's Role as a Regional Economic Hub.' This statement should be interpreted in a regional context which includes the effects of such a strategy on other regional communities. Policies and decisions for enhancing our community's economic role in the region should be primarily based on accurate assessments of providing truly regional benefits, and should not come at the expense of the economic health and well-being of other communities in our region. Any discussion of the enhancement of Bloomington as a regional hub should be accompanied by review of the economic impact of such hub on surrounding communities." Again, I know that the convention center project predated the twenty-eighteen plan, but to the extent that French Lick and Terre Haute could be considered regionally, you know, I have some reticence at taking actions towards economic development strategies or initiatives that would undermine something they've already invested in, or something that's arguably more important to their economic viability than Bloomington. I mean, we have a tremendous number of advantages here in Bloomington economically compared to surrounding communities. I remember very well during the I-69 debates, we had elected officials from Vigo County and Terre Haute come to these chambers and talk to the council about Terre Haute compared to Bloomington's relatively bleak palette of, of options to really enhance, pursue economic development there. And they, they felt very strongly that Terre Haute as a, with I-70 already going east-west through the community, they felt like I-69 should, certainly should have been routed through Terre Haute, up, up its existing US-41, tying into 70, because Terre Haute doesn't have to offer what Bloomington has. And so I, I just wanted to, to say that, you know, this is the kind of thing I, I hope we began thinking more about. And just last year, we did, we did put that into our comprehensive plan, to think more regionally. And I know this, this project's underway, and has been for a while. And so I'm not saying I think we should apply, apply the statement directly to this, but it is, it is something to think about. And I share, as I say, I share some of what Councilmember Piedmont Smith said, but I'm, Mr. Renison assured us that this is a fixed cost, this two-hundred thou, this money for the financial advising and the bond council, and the financial advice. And so I'm, I'm comfortable voting yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims is next.
Thank you. And I will support this ordinance, nineteen oh three. One of the things of it is that we've talked about, or you mentioned, other ancillary expenses and possible other funding options. And we'll talk about that later, I'm sure, but what I'm thinking, and if we build our convention center a certain size in order to generate certain revenues, then has that revenue that we hope to generate, is that part of the funding mechanism in the future? Sort of like a revenue bond? I'm not saying that it is, but I'm thinking about, if we generate this extra revenue, will that be, is it possible for that to be helped to take care of some of that debt bond, or debt load? And that, that's not for tonight, but I wanted to think about, and I'd like to hear about that later, if it's possible. But also, and we talked about design and site plans, we've got this one, and we've got three others that are, and I would like to see something still, and I think I've mentioned that a couple weeks ago, I want to see a mid-option from a funding standpoint, as opposed to the, this one, and then three out here. We probably need at least one here, if that makes sense. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Granger?
That makes sense. I think that makes sense.
Thank you. I, this may not be the place to say this, and I do try to stick within those guidelines, but I don't want the administration to be surprised if council does not get excited about approving a later bond. I think we need to build within our budget, stay within our budget with what the food and beverage tax is going to generate. And having asked the question about if we build bigger or smaller, these particular costs stay the same, I will be supporting this appropriation ordinance, but do not support a huge, huge convention center. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
Yes, thank you. It, it seems pretty clear that the food and beverage tax alone would only fund the low end of the range that we would consider to be sufficiently competitive. So that may be a challenge for the administration, but I still find it encouraging that we can in fact afford with the tax the minimum that we would need to resume being a competitive market for conventions. I would beg to differ with Councilmember Ruff. I definitely don't think that a reason to not expand our convention center is to pity poor Terre Haute. I'm sorry, but I was not elected to represent them or French Lick, and I believe very strongly in the worthiness of Bloomington as a destination. I also would note, again, that we are not just trying to build a convention center here, we're trying to build a civic center as well, and to provide more space for local events, local meetings. It doesn't have to be a big chunk of the convention center, but this tax will enable and will, you know, enable that civic function. More importantly, that will be a function that will bring locals into the center, a very important aspect for acceptance of it. We should not accept a convention center that does not also provide a civic function to local groups, individuals, and events. I also just want to remind everyone that we are in fact the highest legislative body of the city, that it's not an accident that the administration is coming to ask us for approval of these appropriations, because they must, and we should remember that we can say no. We have the power to say no. Maybe it, it doesn't need to be said, but I feel like it, it did. This is the first of several votes that will approve the aspects of a new convention center. And if we are not satisfied, we should, and it's our duty to vote no until we believe that the public interest is being served. With that, I will say that I am encouraged, and I certainly support this appropriation ordinance, and I'm looking forward to the revision of plans to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterbom?
Yeah, the current convention center clearly needs to be expanded. It's bursting, it seems, and turning people away. There will inevitably be more expense than, than the tax will take care of in one way or another. So I, I understand the need for this bond, but I do not want to send a, a green light message for the most expensive, overbuilt convention center that I don't think the community will want to support. So I'm going to support the bond with that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Councilmember Ruff, second comment?
Yeah, thank you for that opportunity to make a second comment. Mr. Chair, I, I just want to clarify, I didn't say that, I didn't think that this convention center project moved forward because of a threat to other communities. I simply said, I was pointing out that we've included this idea in our comprehensive plan, and that it is something we should, we should be thinking about more and more as we move forward. The, this comprehensive plan specifically has a statement that says, "Enhance the community's role as a regional economic hub." And of course, we're elected to represent the community, but, you know, this plan specifically talks about a regional effect, and I'd say with that role as a regional economic hub comes a certain amount of responsibility regionally. And I think if we're in a race, some kind of a competitive race that could conceivably make the whole region, make us all poorer in a way, if we're undermining efforts or having negative impacts on, on regional areas, sister cities, and communities, whether it's, whether it's health, being health facilities, healthcare being concentrated here in Bloomington to the detriment of available healthcare in our regional communities, where they have to actually then travel to Bloomington instead of be able to get some basic care in their own communities, these are the kind of things we're thinking about. I wasn't saying not to, not to do this, this, this project. So anyway, that's, thanks for the opportunity to make another comment. I just want to clarify what I was saying.
Thank you. Any other comments or clarifications? Okay, I have nothing to add, so do we have a recommendation?
Call the question.
Second.
Question's been called and seconded on appropriation ordinance nineteen oh three. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbom?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Appropriation ordinance nineteen oh three is adopted eight-zero. Thank you, Mr. Renison and Mr. Underwood. We have no legislation for first reading, so we'll now go to additional public comments, if anyone would like to make a comment.
And Mr. Chair, because scooters aren't part of this meeting, someone could make a comment on scooters at this time.
Yes, that's right. That's right. You're allowed to speak on scooters, because that was at a previous meeting.
Valerie Merriam, I am reminded of a line in Cool Hand Luke, reminded of a line in Cool Hand Luke, where Luke's down in the dust, and Captain's over him, and he's saying, "What we have here is a failure to communicate." I am concerned about sunshine laws. I was told, and it was verified, that at the May first meeting, at one point, scooter representatives went out into the hall with city administrators, had a discussion. Scooter representatives came back in, one of them said, "Well, then, if you don't do this, we'll just take them." And later, the representatives left with the administration. I don't consider that sunshine. I don't consider it sunshine, what the city did initially with the annexation. We had a lot of problems there, because the county was taken by surprise. So after reading about the fire, what do we call that, agreements being withdrawn, I emailed a council member who is going to remain unnamed, and this person responded to me. I said, "Good evening, wondering if the county was apprised of the rescinding of the fire agreements before it was announced, or was this yet another surprise?" This person just wrote to me. I read it in the paper with everyone else. I have heard that people were aware of conversations between fire chiefs, but I was not. I am really disappointed about this. We have a problem. We have the city doing things without county understanding, and the repercussions on county administration are great for providing services. I'm not sure if you were all apprised of it. I'd kind of like to know, but I think it is a very serious issue.
Thank you for your comment. Further public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go now to council schedule. Mr. Chairman, do we, what do we have to consider?
Yes, two matters. One is that, a reminder that next week, we have scheduled a special session to return to our deliberations on the transportation plan. One of the things that we didn't do in setting up that schedule is cancel the committee of the whole for next week. So I hope you would entertain a motion to cancel that meeting.
Call for a voice vote.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that meeting of the committee of the whole is canceled.
The second matter is a scheduled council work session. It's for this Friday at noon in the council library. It's an opportunity to hear about three items of legislation that will come forward during the last legislative cycle before the June recess. And I'm talking about May twenty-ninth, that's the fifth Wednesday when we'll have a regular session, June fifth, committee of the whole, and June twelfth, regular session. At that, during that cycle, you are expected to consider an appropriation ordinance that was mentioned by, I think, we're in nice and tonight, and it's authorizing money for the architectural fees for designing the convention center. The other two have to do with the Bloomington Housing Authority. The first is an annual resolution where we waive our payments in lieu of taxation. The other is more interesting. It revisits our agreement with the housing authority. That agreement was reached in nineteen sixty-one, and the housing authority is looking for a new way of financing improvements to its facilities, which would affect the agreement, and it's rather interesting, and it would come up during that cycle. You have an opportunity to hear about it next, this Friday. And by the way, if this Friday doesn't work for you, and you do want to hear about it before it gets on our agenda, we might want to reschedule that council work session for the following Friday, which I believe is May thirty-first or thirtieth? Thirty-first?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, there you go. Thank you. All right. So what would you like to do this, about this council work session?
Who can attend the council work session on Friday? Raise their hand. Two of us? Three of us?
Okay.
So we'll hold that.
Good. I'll arrange for that. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our schedule. Considerations? All right, then, is there a motion for adjournment?
We will do. Mr. Simms has a question.
Do we decide to schedule the search twenty-fourth?
Is the work session the twenty-fourth or the seventeenth?
I assume you schedule it for this Friday, but it's up to you. What do you want?
Well, I assume this Friday.
Well, but my question is, next Friday is the start of Memorial Day weekend.
Is there a work session?
No.
Okay.
Just this week.
Okay, so, okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.